Work session of the West Liberty City Council together. Uh, we're here to talk about uh the ideas on the water or the pool here in town. Councilmember Schultz is on its way and councilmember Martinez is going to be five to 10 minutes late, but uh we'll go ahead and get started so. City manager, do you have a preference on how to start?
Let her rip there. I don't have a preference. Um, I can introduce Nick Keith is gonna do the uh presentation. As you remember, and I believe in May. We had the presentation presented by the individual who performed the feasibility study. And um Nick had. Um, a new addition to his family and so. So we have Nick here to present on behalf of the the park and rec for the city. And along with him, we have Matt Chow as he's a part of the company as well.
Nick, I think that would be a good place to start if you could talk a little bit about the need and.
So yeah, to start, um, I know you guys obviously went through with Patrick. With the slides already that we have in our hands here, uh, but our pool is currently ninety-four years old. Uh, and that's uh, you know, some of this ninety-four years old, some of them might be fifty years old, some of it's twenty-three years old now. Um, there's been updates along the way, you know, there's people in the community that could probably tell you when the changes were done. But the pool vessel itself, uh, concrete pool, you're going to get fifty, you're supposed to get about fifty years out of and. We're sitting at, who knows actually how many years with the the pool vessel there. Um, we're always finding cracks, you know, there's been cuts in there that have been um filled in and then there's always another leak somewhere else and. So that's kind of where we're at there. Um, there's not a lot to it. We have a slide and a diving board, baby pool, three foot all the way to nine foot. We're lacking features, we're lacking an updated guardhouse, bathrooms, ADA compliance. Mechanical room, um, better ventilation system. Mac can attest for being part of the parks department the last couple of years with some of that. It's it's something that we've talked about for quite a few years now with different councils. And this is the first time we put it out, put together a feasibility study just to even get a design of something to look at instead of. Hey, we need this, we need that, this is what we should be, well, uh, you know, someone draw something on a piece of napkin or something, you know. But we actually have a design, two designs that are just to start with. That's not counting what we've, we'd get any feedback from a community meeting um that we would set at some point in the future. Uh, we. If you go back to the feasibility or the comprehensive plan in two thousand and seventeen, there was tons of comments that were for parks and recreation. And a good chunk of them were pool and trail. And what people want, you know, uh splash pad within the pool, you know, features, you know, just upgraded. And where we're at with these two designs was basically kind of what I gave him and then he worked with that. And he did his research of within fifty mile radius of whatever other pools, what they have features. Amenities and then bring, give us some different things. Um, and the whole point of that is to try and bring. New people to West Liberty or give our community members. Big upgrade, you know, uh. So, uh, that's kind of where we're at.
So these are a couple of designs, but nothing has been established.
We're, we're not even, we're not even close to that. We, we have two designs just for councils to look at and, you know, to give us an idea of what we can do. This is the, what you have right now, this is sit fitting right into what you currently have, but just a different design. And new guardhouse with bathrooms would have the mechanical room up in the front with everything in one place. So you don't have to walk from all the way to the front, all the way to the back, like during the day with our lifeguards, they can just jump over one door. Go in, do their chemical test, things like that. Uh, you know, a family restroom on the outside on the decks. That we don't currently have, and that's for when you have two or three kids, you know, you can go in, you can. You can still see them go to the bathroom or you can take a group into the bathroom if you need to, changing tables, things like that. Right now you have to walk inside the, inside the building and you lose vision of your child, things like that, so.
I have some other questions, but why don't I open that up to the council for questions or concerns?
The existing structure that is the main part of the pool, um. That has, as I understand it, significant cracks in the concrete.
I mean, it's, yes, there's been cracks filled, uh, the nine foot slope has a significant one that goes. Three quarters of the length across that's been recocked. Um, at least three times now in the nineteen years that I've been involved in the pool. Uh, it'll, it holds for a couple of years. And then when we drain the pool, you'll see water seeping out of little holes. Cause that pressure off of the pool then about water from over the winter time, then it's going the other way. Now it's coming, that groundwater seeping.
Up into the.
So now with the water on there, it's actually going out.
Okay.
Go ahead, Matt.
Few years ago, the neighbor next door was complaining because the pool was leaking so fast, he was getting water in his basement for the pool.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
On the east side there?
Yeah, we wouldn't. It's the last house right, uh, right by the parking.
Oh, next to the field, next to the parking of the school.
So we, we fixed that leak, um, but then we now have another one because when you fix one. Then it has to find somewhere to go and there's just too many in that pool to keep recocking and then. Yeah, it's gonna find another spot, so.
Yeah, and this isn't the first time I've heard this. I've heard this during my terms as a councilperson. Since two thousand and sixteen as well as my husband's terms when he served in two thousand and three, four. That there were issues with filling the cracks in at that time as well. So I know that the concrete. Has is probably overdue and the, the facility we went with that did the study. They also encouraged a new pool as well because of the age and the deterioration of the concrete.
Uh, if you, I don't know if you're fancy, uh, City Park in Iowa City is, I believe eighty something years old and they're, they're in the current. Designs, plans of theirs as well, they're getting ready, they had a huge leak. Um, Wilton Pool had an indoor, they had a major leak and they decided to just tear down their pool and they don't have one now. So, um, it gets to the point of where we're, we just keep putting Band-Aids on things. Or do we go for an upgrade and finally make that jump for it? Obviously the sticker price is going to be a big thing. Uh, we get that. And I can compare to what Patrick and them did with Kyoto, uh, they just opened up this year. Uh, Kyoto's a population of like nine hundred, I think, and they just did like a two point three million dollar pool. And it is a third of our, what ours is right now per uh gallon wise and what they have to offer, so. Trying to do, you know, the pricing of that.
I, I was surprised when he had shown us statistics of comparisons. Our pool for the size of community we have is quite substantial.
Yes.
It, which really surprised me. We have a very large pool. And I'd like to keep. A very large pool. But yeah, cost is an issue.
I think today we even, when I was at work in Johnson County, we were talking about the city, um, we were talking about. Putting bond measures on ballots and stuff like that. Um, and it was mentioned that the city was going to try to do that. How, would that be something we would need to do? Obviously not this election, but. Um, we probably wouldn't look to put it as a referendum. We would look at um our options for doing a general obligation bond. Um, and where we, in the past, what we've done is we've had our public hearings, um, we propose the debt to the public. Um, but that debt is based on the project and what we're looking to encompass with that project. Um, if we look at a general obligation of. Debt for this, I mean, the opportunity you give with that, you can encompass. Um, a little bit more, you don't have to be, you could say your general obligation is to cover not just with the pool, but you can encompass if you see. Some trail work, you know, and you can bring that all into, to that debt. Um, and levy property tax, local option sales tax, tax in front of finance. Um, are some options that we can utilize to pay that debt. And so our practice is not then to put it on a ballot of referendum, where we can levy the debt to a budget by. Uh, a fund to do a, a debt. Along with, you know, some of our conversations because of the, the leaks that have occurred, there's unknowns is underneath the actual vessel. Um, there's some unknown concerns, is there voids? That are existing because of the significant leaks that have occurred over the years. Um, we, you know, like a washout that you would see from heavy rains or heavy water moving. Um, those are some things that are safety concerns because it's unknown if there's voids underneath of our vessel. And, and if there are, you know, how deep are they? Um, and that also causes more shifting to the existing concrete vessel that's there. And we'll always, you know, continually be dealing with, you know, ongoing cracks and separation because of that. Um, another safety concern is not just with the vessel itself, but the concrete um pad, um, where um. Around the pool itself has got some uneven, it's got some lifting. And you know, there's a safety with that that we will get, you know, that's gonna come up. Um, that we would have to cut out and fix and repair, um, so. Versus what we're saying, you know, just keep throwing money out and, and band-aiding, you, you look at the bigger picture and, you know. And do we just, you know, upgrade the vessel, its existing vessel footprint? Leave it as it is? Do we take the time to incorporate, you know, more amenities during that process? Um, one of, um, something, you know, we briefly talked about is, um, with the, the pool house. Would this be an opportunity for us to apply for a FEMA grant and incorporate a, a safe shelter? Um, that way, you know, even when there are times where we're not able to have community members go to the school, if the school's in session. Then we have another option for a, a, a safe shelter, uh, for community members to, to get out of the worst of your weather. Um, so I mean. As Nick has stated, you know, these are the early stages, these are concepts. Um, this is something for council to look at, um, and then, you know, and, and from that we can make. You know, a, a future action item to say, you know, what, oh, what do we want to do? Do we want to establish a capital project? Do we want to direct? The park and rec board to start working on design, um, you know, development and direct administration to look at bonding and how that works. So. I, I, I would say based on my time here with the city as Nick is saying, and as councilmember McFerrin is saying. The costs go up and up, um, every year and this is, um, a wonderful service. You know, that we're a quality of life that we're able to provide to our community. Um. The downside is, is, you know, we also have a lot of rural community neighbors that utilize this service that. You know, we're not able to levy property tax on. At the same time, you know, again, the importance of shopping locally is so we have local option sales tax, um, for those that come to our community. Um, to utilize, but again, you know, by, um. Making some amenity improvements or upgrades, you know, this, this would provide maybe an opportunity, as Nick is saying, is marketing. You know, that amenity to invite, you know, folks, guests to a community to utilize the facility to help offset those costs.
Questions, comments, any other council members of the council?
What would it look like if we, if they decide to do something like timeframeally, like for two years, one year, I mean, as far as like, how long would the pool be shut down? There was some concerns that I heard that, you know.
That they, I.
You know, I mean, it depends on the design, I'm sure.
It depends on weather, it depends on obviously manufacturing, uh, deliveries, all that stuff that we've come across in the last few years. You know, he stated if everything works out, the best way is we could still, we'd be open the next year because literally the day we close. They start, they could start working and if, you know, we close August second of twenty twenty-seven. You know, there's a good chance we could still be open at some point of the summer season of twenty twenty-eight if everything falls right. Because the biggest, if you look at it, the biggest cost is concrete being poured, you know. So. There's, there's a lot of factors, but I just, I, you know, Kyoto, I know, I'm just using Kyoto because I know it's the recent one that's been used and it's the company we're working with. They were about a month behind, I think, if I remember right. Uh, but they're open and, uh, you know, they're, they're, they're loving it and I think. My whole, whole point of when I was talking to Patrick is, you know. And this is my kind of vision as parks in general is we want the best, we, we want to have the best as possible we can, right? Because I want the community members to have a place to go, you know, whether it's just the parks, playgrounds. Now the pool, we finally, this is the first time I've actually sat in front of a council to actually have more than a discussion of, hey, our pool needs fixed. Hey, that's, this is the furthest we've got and, uh. And we can, we can do whatever we want, but we have from. One-year-olds all the way to, you know, retirees that love to go to lap swim and do all that, that we have to find a way to, to make this work for them. Uh, you know, I had Jill Page back here that brings thirty to fifty kids. Um, three, four days a week at least to, you know, throughout the summer and. There's, you know, things that just don't work for her with the deck size, like their whole group is packed in on the east side. And there's no space there, like we have to be able to make something work over there where we have more space where. If you want to get away from kids splashing, you can get under some shade. Great, like we, that, that's what this, these concepts offer right now. Uh, if you wanna, you know, kind of get a little bit further away and get under an awning, which we have no shade whatsoever, um. You know, we, that's a, that's a, that's a perk we have in these good designs in a new pool, uh. Just new things that other places don't have other pools, you know, uh, wall climb, climbing wall, a rope swing, you know, things like that, that. You know, doesn't, it doesn't take a, an extra lifeguard on duty to, to man those. Uh, cause you're not manning a thing, you're manning a, a zone, um, a slide's a different thing because of. Age restrictions and things like that, you gotta have someone at the top, things like that, so.
Yeah, I like the, the conception they came up with, um, and the fact that you have in certain cases dedication. Um, like in the zero entry for the little ones, you've got, you know. Adequate amenities for coverage because there is none right now. And, um, you've got, it looks like a complete dedication to an area of the pool for lap swim. At, at all times, anytime of the day, day or night. So, I mean, I like that. Fact that it's upgraded to like today's usage, contemporary usage of how, you know, what people want.
Um, another, another item, um, so our pool does get utilized quite a bit for birthday parties, private parties. And, you know, um, just another option as we're going through and we could, you know, look at. In addition, having, right now we have the pool shelter, you know, it's enclosed, but it's adjacent to the pool, so, you know. Due to the number of pool parties we have or events that we have, you know, this may be an opportunity for us to incorporate. You know, an area that, you know, you can have an enclosure where those things can happen because, you know, you definitely don't want food and drinks out on the pool floor, but. We do have, um, a lot of those that are booked during our, our months and. And they incorporate the shelter and there's sometimes that the shelter is already booked and it's not aligned with the pool party. So I mean, you know, there's, there's some opportunity for us to work just beyond the concepts is what, you know, Nick and them are trying to say is. These were just concepts based on what's currently out there, what it could look like, um, but that would come into establishing, you know. Directing and setting a planning, you know, setting the time for planning and some design and getting input. And then, you know, moving on along to adopting a design and, you know, looking at the bonding and things like that.
Other comments from council? Any questions?
Did you remember from the last meeting, um? Obviously the financing of all of this would be a couple of larger portions, but it was nice to hear that. You have different amenities, whether it be the slides, the climbing wall, those can all be kind of fused together as we go. Correct? If we could put in different things at different times depending, or would you more want everything to be done all?
Uh, I mean, I would say this, obviously this slide you're gonna want in right away because of. Just the main, the install, if you already got everything around there, it's like getting it in there and all, you know. Um, the wall, the, the awnings, uh, the rope swing, like those are things that, yeah, could be added on at the end. Uh, or anymore a year later or whatever, uh, I'd have to look at the cost, I just don't remember the numbers right now. I know the. The zero entry, um, and the slide, the zero entry toddler play, um, elevation and the slide where you're two bigger costs, uh, for those. Yeah, something that you can always do and we can always, um, come back when we do a design, we can make it small, you know, you can make the pool smaller too, you know. You're just kind of, I think right now it's the, we're at the top of what we would ask for and then we cut things if we need to. But I do, I, my recommendation is that we, we need more than what we have. Uh, I just, I call it a plain Jane pool. It, it's got one diving board and a, a slide. Uh, that's it. And. Trying to keep, I, I don't want to, like, we have to keep up with everyone around us, but. We still want, we want, we want some good stuff, you know, like we, it's time. You know, we, we, they'll have the same thing kind of for years and years and just kind of keep pushing the pool off and. You know, same with the, the trail stuff, like, I mean, those are things that people want, um, they voice their opinions and surveys and things like that and. I think we're to the point where it's time to, time to do something big for the West Liberty.
I agree. I, I remember when my kids were little and we used to come to the West Liberty School. And then I took them to the Quahog Bowl and they never wanted to go to the West Liberty School again because those amenities, they really like. Make it fun for kids to be there, so I can definitely see other communities who don't have stuff like that nearby. Wanting to come to West Liberty when we get stuff like that.
I get like, you know, splash pads have a lot of fun things as well and those kind of just. Like that's what a little bit of that toddler play area does, offers that, um, the water's a little bit higher as the ankle peed, whatever it'll be, but. You know, that's, it's kind of, that's, that hits that age group that, that's what that's for and then we have a next, another, uh, area of the pool where you got the diving board, you got the slide, you got the rope swing. Where now we're trying to maybe hit junior high age kids that, you know, to come right now and it's, they're kind of in between at our pool, it's like, do they just come to hang out?
Yeah.
Or come and call, you know, like do things, um.
Or even like a ba, the basketball.
Yep, we did, that's all, there's a basketball hoop.
Teenagers would love that.
So, um, you know, another small thing is that the current mechanical building that we have would be transformed into, uh, storage. And bathrooms to the public at Kimberly, that would be closer to the playground and the shelter, so. It's win-win.
Councilmember Martinez, any questions or comments or want to make sure? Um, I thought it would be nice to hear from folks from the community too, but I don't want to cut off questions here. Um, I wanted to mention too, Lee mentioned about the need for emergency shelter and I'm really interested in that with FEMA. Uh, I would add to that heating and cooling areas, um. The number of storms that we've had this year, uh, the extreme heat, the horrible winter we had for. Uh, a few days in February, uh, make all of that things that we need, I think, here.
The only other thing I would admire is just keeping in mind if there is opportunities for fundraising. Because, you know, the community has often come together when big things like this, um, needs funding because. What I don't want to see is us putting this amazing pool together and only half of our community can afford to go, um, to cover that cost. So I think there is a lot of opportunity for fundraising. I'd be happy to even hope, you know, try to get that going if needed.
Let me open that up for, uh, folks from the community, comments that folks would like to make.
I'll say my favorite, Josh Jackson, uh, I, my family uses the pool. Three or four times a week, like all the time. I know my kids would enjoy more features and extend their use into their teenage years. If, you know, a lot of stuff was added to it and, you know, I'm not, uh, fundraising obviously, but. Indoor, uh, an indoor, uh, facility, uh, to extend the season even more is probably, uh, something I would love to see and. Using the old pool as the new skate park. Ban the, the skate park that we have now and put it in that pool, that in the, the concrete masters, uh, uh. Test their hard work, but it, I mean, that's exactly what Iowa City is doing, you know, they're, they're going through a huge remodel right now and that's the kind of stuff that our kids are, care about, like they. Arts, you know, organized sports, they're not going to use the baseball fields, but they would absolutely use the pool facility all year round and they would love it. So, uh, my vote is. You, uh, trying to extend it as long as possible, with the indoor.
Right, thank you.
We've been here since seventy-eight, uh. I've been on the park and rec board and it is, it seems like. Every so many years there's more Band-Aids and more Band-Aids and I, I am very impressed with this really. Coming to the council and the council really thinking about maybe doing something because it's a long time coming. Um, our son lives in North Liberty and they've got quite a pool set up in North Liberty that you come, we're gonna be here all next week and I'll be at the pool every day. It was gonna reopen, but even like yesterday when it was so hot and wanted to go to the pool, but. If you're there, there's no place to get out for a few minutes in the shade unless you go back into the. Shower area if there was some shade, even some shaded area, which is part of the plan would be additional incentive, you know, to come to the pool on this.
I think it's a great idea. Um, I took my son there for years and then he worked for Jill for what, seven summers, so he was there every day. Um. I think with every meeting I've ever been to where it's, you know, we need housing, we need this, this is an amenity that's always brought up. Um, I grew up in West Branch and they've been talking about putting a pool in since I was born. Maybe before and I'll be sixty-two in September and they still don't have a pool. Um, there used to be one out at the country club and then that's gone, so there's a community that. Couldn't get their act together or something to get a pool and I love that we have ours and I'm really tickled to hear that there's. You know, like Nick says, he's gone farthest with this council, um, to actually have a, a rendering of something that could be, so. I'm very tickled, um, if we're gonna do an indoor thing. If we're gonna do an indoor thing with a pool, I want pickleball inside too, um, Nick knows that, so. We just add that to the list, but thank you for at least considering this, I think, I think our community deserves it. When you're talking about outside communities, they're gonna come here, like Dana said, um. You bring the kids here once, they're gonna want to come back and we came here all the time as a kid because, like I said, West Branch didn't happen, so. Build it, if you build it, they will come when. How that movie goes.
Uh, so a hand up.
Uh, Jill Page and I run the West Liberty with my after school program and summer program, so I can have anywhere that exists thirty, it takes fifty to come to the pool and. We used to go five days a week, but we now travel to another town to go to a pool, um. I, we've been to other aquatic centers throughout, within driving distance, um, we only choose to do one. And we choose to go to that one based upon the layout of the facility, so layout for a childcare center is a really big deal. Um, I twenty-four years of doing this and when I first started, we did have centers that gives a very. Um, but as towns around us upgraded and built pools and had upgrades, those city camps don't visit us. Um, we used to have uh handy care, handy, handy, it's a childcare center, they don't come to West Liberty. Um, I've seen the, the patches, I've seen it deteriorate and for sure it's time, um. It, I, I was, I did have a question about whether this, this footprint is exactly what, what we have now, Nick. What I'm gonna ask?
Yes.
But, um, that was one of my questions, the bathrooms are a huge, huge issue for anybody who bring in a group. Um, the shade, we just, we've just gone along with the time, we bring umbrellas to them. So the umbrellas that you might see in some of the pictures, they're actually ours, uh because there is some shade, um. And like grandmas and grandpas, they don't have anywhere to put their, they have nowhere to get out, but yet need the shade, stay out of the city. Um, but I think it's time, also. And I would love to give my input on the layout and stuff like that. Because I do bring big groups and there is, it's a little bit different than bringing your one child, two children. Fifty's a big difference and there is reason why we don't use the musketeen with bodies, we just don't, um. Because it's not sanitary or whatever, but it is safer, it's, it is safer, it's, it's just as a director, like a certain amount of staff. It's not our most ideal layout, so we go to the, the pool that has a most ideal layout, not happens to be tipped. Um, but I like how this has an adult, a deep end still, the, the, this not happen. Um, I like that they can, you know, you have little children who have a teenager thing, the teenager thing, they. You just haven't seen them use it anymore, they, some of them come, they just don't use it much, it's just, it's not fun, it's not fun for them. Um, they can use the little center, so it's, it is time to, to do something for our teenagers sometime.
Right, I think there was a question here, for, what's that?
For the, for what I was thinking is, I wanted to throw out there, um, the possibility of the. The house or whatever you call it, the pool house, um, you'd mentioned. In maybe incorporating that into emergency management as well, I'm, I'm wondering if we couldn't. Incorporate that in, you know, emergency management to the max because my, my thought is, you know, if we can. Make a substantial building that would be able to house in the event of, you know. Some uh emergency disaster that would offer people shelter, um. As well as turning that space into having activity, indoor activities. And making it also, um, possibly youth type. Activity for, you know, teenage youth or something, or indoor arcade or games or something that we. Like gymnasium like or something, but that we would be able to incorporate both maybe into one structure and then make it. Big enough to have it for year round and use it in some capacity year round.
So, um, so there is potential, um, and I don't wanna. I hear what you're saying, we do have some potential, you know, we've been kind of working on some property. And so we have, we, we would have some potential there to incorporate some of those things that you're talking about.
Okay.
Um, you know, and, and how can we, you know, how can we. Merge the pool and that potential opportunity together. And so I think that you're, you are in the right direction in that, you know, we have to be thinking that. You're not only from the pool concept, but the future visioning of how can we extend that? And, you know, what we're hearing from the public is creating, you know, a season that's an all-around season. For having indoor recreation, opportunity for pickleball, for maybe pool or. You know, skating or, you know, those things, but, you know, the, that's, you know, the conversation that we're gonna have to look at having. Once we, you know, once we acquire some property, I think that, that we could maybe, you know, kind of get into that bigger part of that conversation. That could encompass and say, not only are we looking at the pool now, now if we own this property.
Oh.
Maybe now we, we look at that as a bigger, a bigger picture of a project. Um, I want to recognize Lisa, you know, you, she made a good point here, the one thing that we're not talking about is that. You know, for all these years, um, the city has provided. Um, an opportunity for our youth to be lifeguards or to have jobs. You know, in close proximity where they're not having to drive, you know, out of the city of West Liberty. Um, to go work in another community and so, you know, you know, another importance of having this facility. Or even maybe creating a larger facility would continue to provide those opportunity to our youth or. And it's not just our youth, I mean, we've had, um, you know, diverse ages working for, for the pool, but. I think that that's something too that, you know, that we, we don't always recognize, but it does. If we eliminate the pool altogether, you know, we're taking away from approximately twenty. You know, individuals that have an opportunity to employ within the city. Um, during those months when they're not in school, um, and then they've got a commute possibly out of our city limits. Quite a distance, um, to, to get a, to have a job. And I can't remember if we talked about it last time and Nick, you weren't here, and maybe that's why we didn't go into it. If there was conversation about having like an all-year-round indoor.
So, uh, I mean, obviously, it's been brought, it's been brought up now.
Yeah, because I mean, that would also allow kids to work year round.
I, um, it would be great.
Yeah.
It would, because uh I think uh, could the nursing home then bring people over and we'd have time for them and they could do some. Some water aerobics just with a very small group, um, I think your, your biggest thing is during. Eight to three.
Yeah.
During school, who's, who's there, who's standing to be open? Uh, you know, our kids are high schoolers, maybe a freshman in college, um. We, we do employ kids from West Branch and Wilton as well, um, almost every year, uh, we have those kids, so. You know, if, you know, other people that wanted, that would quit, step up, it would provide a year-round position. You know, a, a pool manager, we would need to look into, uh, you know, someone on site. You know, a lot of people can be able to do those things and then, you know, being. WSI, which is a water safety instructor, which Kelly Morrison is, you know, currently, uh, our only one and, you know, she can teach lessons. Uh, that are with, within Red Cross requirements, you know, there's all those things that we'd have to look into. Um, you do have a little more upkeep, um, your ventilation system better be. Top of the line, uh, because you aren't gonna have some issues with your roof, you're ceiling with the. With the chlorine and all that stuff and, and, or, well, just stories I have heard at, you know, conferences and stuff like that, so. When you think of a hotel pool too as well.
I'd like, I'd like also to consider looking into the avenue of making sure that our facility, whether it's pool or. Uh, we're building, um, really moves to uh incorporating. Uh, amenities for people with disabilities, handicaps, youth and adult. Um, whether they're handicapped or have a disability, that they're able to still utilize the pool. I know there's certain me- mechanical things that, you know, would be needed.
You can have ramps, you can have stairs, you can have, uh.
Lifts, whatever.
Uh, there's all those options of that could be installed and those are talks that.
Okay.
You know, we would want to make sure, but uh he does, at most, our dad know that you do have to follow ADA compliance.
Okay.
Uh, it, you, you just have to, um.
But do a lot of pools have that, those abilities? I mean, do they offer that?
A lot of places will have, um, the lifts.
Mm-hmm, okay.
You know, uh, slip resistance stairs, um, like, and, uh. Were, I think, pretty rare, would, would have such a big ramp that was installed at some point, um. I know some people really enjoy that and how do we bring, how do we try and get something like that if we need to, I know zero entry. You can just operate it, um.
Okay.
But yes, there's all those things that we would have to, you know, that, and I think a lot of it has to depend on the size of your pool. And how many you have to have on site that.
Okay, alright.
Some are just the portable ones where they'll, they'll pull them out every day.
Yeah.
Take the cover off, then at the end of the night, they wheel them back in, um, for safety and not his name and damage and things like that, so.
Okay.
But.
I think, um, the, uh, in a moment, I want to outline. And make sure that we just don't walk away from this meeting, but we have kind of a plan or do have a plan of the steps that we need to take, but. Um, before I do that, I wanted to mention that I think something we haven't talked about is safety and uh the pool here in West Liberty has had a tremendously. Uh, good history of being safe, um, uh, which I think speaks to some of the issues about affordability, um. And the quality of the young people that have been working at it, the overall management of the pool, um. And uh kids are gonna be in water in summer, um, and uh having lived in Marshalltown for a good number of years. Um, the Iowa River, um, and being a mental health professional, I uh oversaw too many critical incident debriefings with. Uh, firefighters and police officers who dealt with drownings as a result of that. Uh, so this is more of an area of farm ponds, uh, for kids than if we don't provide some kind of quality program. And it also speaks to what you said about affordability, that we make sure that the children who, um. Need to have that recreation available to them or their families are able to afford this. But steps, um, I don't want to step on the um role of the Park and Rec uh Board. Would it be appropriate for Park and Rec to uh draw in like, um. Jill said that she has some ideas, uh, and so I think we need some point where ideas are gathered. And then, um, we take those ideas, what uh is recommended by some group, by a sim Park and Rec. Um, that then is brought to us to look at, uh, and working with Ken on uh ways that. Ramps that we might be able to get through FEMA and other organizations, that that would be the next step and then we end up with the cost. And that becomes the decision of council, if I've left out anything or there's another approach, I'd like to know that.
Sounds good.
I think there's the, the actual community meeting that.
Yes.
We would bring Patrick in, he would take those ideas and then, hey, we want two more designs.
Okay.
Okay, um, those are, that, that one meeting is already in the cost that we paid for his. Uh, for this right now, um, we could do more, you know, we can pay that extra cost for another meeting if we need to. Um, but I think somewhere sprinkled in there, you gotta have that open community besides just a couple.
Wh- where do we sprinkle that in?
Um, you know, we, uh, we, what, I'd say somehow we get a timeline of where you guys want, I can, I'll reach out to Patrick and, hey. We're looking at this, we can be set up, uh, community meeting, we'll get it posted on social media, the website, you know, all that. Mass email on, on rec desk, um, and then like we, we did our master parks plan, we did a community meeting and we did it here.
What, what, what the, what the steps we need to be, I mean, I'll just ask the, she can, um, verify. So where, where we would be, um, with this being a work session, um, then what we would could do is the first meeting in August. Um, um, I'll work with Nick, um, we will work with the facility, um, study. Um, the engineer on this, we will identify specific steps. Um, and what council would do is they would accept and, uh, they would file and receive the pool feasibility study as presented. And then, um, what we can do is create, um, the steps, um, identify the steps and have council. Um, approved by consensus and then give direction of those steps and then those would include. You know, what goes to a park record for them, what the, you know, community meetings and that would be the entire planning process. Um, you know, that we would start off and that, you know, you would look at, let's say, phase one is planning process. You know, um, phase two is, you know, adopting the actual. Project and the, and the construction and then another phase would be your, your financial pieces of it, so. You know, that's how you would want to look at identifying those steps and then you, as the council, direct that. To those, to the, to the boards and then, you know.
Would we have to come up with the steps or can like Nick come up with the steps?
No, that's something, oh, no, that's something Nick and I can sit down and, and we can work out. And that's what these folks do, you know, they identify, you know, how do you get to, how do you get to that?
Yeah.
Um, but you know, what I've heard through some comments and things, you know, I think that. There, there may be some more community discussion that has to be had overall of a bigger picture of what we're looking at, not just a pool. Or is that the part that we need to identify is that for our community, are we just going to focus on the pool? And then maybe in the future, look at maybe a left center, you know, so I think that that's, that's part of it too, is that we need to identify. You know, from these concepts, what that discussion needs to be.
Yeah. So I've heard this discussion and so I want to turn back for any community input, uh, if folks are comfortable with that approach. I just don't want us to let this uh stop here. Okay, let's move forward with, with my, let's, there's opposition on the council.
One, one point of interest would be the, uh, parking lot of the ELC. Is, that's the rubble from the previous building, uh, if there's asbestos in the ground there. And this, in the city, you have to pick up the tab from the school's demolition project. If we expand this pool, you know, in the south direction, that. That's something that needs to be, that could be, that the cost could be shared with the school, uh, to, uh. Uh, start addressing the grading that we potentially need or getting this stuff cleaned up, or does it not even reach into the pool?
I mean, I think for our, for us, what we would have to do, that would be definitely. Um, something that when we get into the engineering and knowing that, I mean, they always do the testing. Of the, you have to always have a soil testing done, um, if it has to be remediation and the city takes full ownership of that property. It becomes the city's responsibility at that time, because we accept the property as is, um. With knowing if that soil testing comes back that shows, you know, that it has asbestos or it has something. That could then identify, you know, a different change in the plan because you don't want to disrupt that soil. And those would be things that I think that during this process, we would want to identify and talk about that as part of the plan.
That be involved with the engineering part of it, right?
Yeah, we always have to do the soil samples on, anytime we break ground or anytime we move dirt. Um, we're required, uh, by law to do that, so I'm, yeah, that's a good question.
There are additional funding options or videos?
Um, that would be something we would have to, we could, we could ask D and I, yeah, we would have to talk to D and I on. You know, that, that aspect of it.
Good.
Sounds like somebody should be running the council.
All right, uh, if there's nothing else, we will adjourn. And city clerk, I don't remember, ju- just have to announce that we're going to adjourn. So we'll spare a few minutes before the council meeting starts at, uh, seven thirty and we look the other way if you decide not to stay.
I would, I will say, um, I will work with our communications director and what we will do is we will, we will post. This feasibility study, um, on our website, so for those of you community members that are here. Um, we, I'll have, um, that announcement made, so if you do have questions while you're out and about visiting. Um, we will hope to get that posted here in the next couple of weeks. Um, so the community members have access to see what was discussed here tonight. Um, but community members are also welcome to come in and, um, request a copy of it, it's a public record, so. Um, you can request a copy of that information as well.